All right, we're gonna reconvene our session. I'd like to ask trustee Lang to point out any actions taken in closed session.
Yes, there were two actions that were taken in closed session tonight. On a seven to zero vote, the board voted to reject Saddleback College students' appeal of administrative determination alleging discrimination. And second, on a seven to zero vote, the board voted to reject the claim filed by Sophia Smith claiming wrongful death. Those are the actions in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Lang. I'll now do the invocation led by me and the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Jay. Having just observed Veterans Day, I thank those who have served our country valiantly, loyally, and without reservation. It was actually on this day, 35 years ago, that the memorial dedicated to the veterans of the Vietnam War was unveiled in our nation's capital. This powerful and solemn memorial displays the names of over 60,000 veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And as we approach Thanksgiving Day, we really have a lot for which to be thankful at the South Orange County Community College District. We are a robust institution of two colleges and three campuses serving more than 60,000 students per year and employing 3,000 faculty and staff. We must never take for granted what this great institution provides to our students and community and shall never forget that our district belongs not to us but to our residents and the taxpayers. We are provided so much from this institution and it is with this obligation that we, as your elected trustees, strive to make the best decisions possible for our students, community, faculty, staff, and administration. And I'm reminded myself what legendary American labor leader and civil rights activist Cesar Chavez once said. He said, quote, "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community," end quote. And I'd just like to ask everyone to pause for a brief moment of silence just to give thanks for the wonderful district we are really blessed to have. Thank you. Trustee Jay.
Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance to our wonderful country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We now have public comments. Seems like we have quite a few. As our normal procedure, we ask that those who are gonna make public comments to limit your remarks to two minutes. We do have a lot of people requesting comments tonight, and I'd like to ask you to try to adhere to those limitations. So first up on my list is Beatrice Sang? Did I pronounce that right?
Hi, good evening. My name is Beatrice Sang. This is my 27th year teaching Spanish at Irvine Valley College. And I'm here today to support my colleagues in our request for compensation for the work that we're doing during the transition from Blackboard to Canvas. Since fall of 2002, I have been teaching an online course, Spanish IV. And it's a very rigorous course with weekly discussions and, of course, all the different assignments, including videos, music, grammar explanations, et cetera, and, of course, a lot of tests. And I was told that the conversion from Blackboard to Canvas would be a very easy one, but it really didn't turn out as easy as it sounds. The content itself was transferred, and that was really easy, but the whole formatting and the style in which Canvas is designed is really different from Blackboard. To prepare me for this transition, I actually took the course that was offered at Irvine Valley College and I know at the district also, the online teaching with Canvas. And I certainly did learn a lot. I spent a good 50 hours of my time in the middle of the spring semester taking this course. But what I noticed is I learned as a student taking that course, but what I really needed is to learn how to be an instructor in that course, meaning how to create my courses in Canvas from the side of an instructor. So I had to actually take additional workshops at IVC and also others offered by my colleagues who were experts in Canvas. Then during the summer, I spent about 70 hours recreating my Spanish IV class to have it ready to be taught. In addition, I also spent another 60 to 70 hours to create a shell for Spanish I and II so that, and that was with my colleague Jeanne Gass, so we can share that shell course with our adjunct faculty. They teach probably just one class in our district, and I think it would be so much to ask them to learn and recreate the course themselves with the new platform. During the fall staff development week, we met with all of adjuncts for a good two, three-hour session to train them in Canvas and also with the shell that we sent to them. And additionally, we also spent, you know, a good few hours individually answering their own questions. The learning curve is actually going this semester. I'm teaching Canvas for the first time, and I'm just adjusting and fine-tuning as I go. So as a new professor, I really want to provide the best education and instruction to my students, and that's why I actually spent my summertime creating all these courses because I knew during the fall semester and spring I would not have the time to do that because of all my teaching schedule. So I'm here to ask you to approve some compensation for all the amount of work that us as faculty are doing in order, you know, to come and be ready for this transition, the conversion to Canvas. So thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Jeanne Gass? Gassy? Jeanne or Jean? Okay.
So I've taught here 10 years longer than Beatrice has. So, pretty long time. Still love what I do, so can't quite seem to kick the habit. So I spent a long time perfecting my courses in Blackboard. I won't say I was an expert at it, but I used it for probably eight to nine years. And maybe it wasn't the best online management system, but it was efficient. It pretty much did the job. So when I heard we were gonna switch to Canvas, I thought, oh, that is going to be so much work. But they told me, oh, don't worry, you're just gonna transfer your courses from Blackboard to Canvas. And so when I accessed the newly migrated courses, I found a pile of undecipherable useless files. So I knew I was gonna have to start from scratch. So just like my colleague Beatrice Sang, last spring I signed up for that online course. They told me it would take 12 to 14 hours a week, and they were not lying. It was a really rigorous course, right in the middle of the semester, when a whole bunch of extra hours a week is not really something of work, is not really very welcome. And then the course was really just the tip of the iceberg. So I took the course, and then I spent another 60 to 70 hours this summer redesigning my Spanish I and II courses with my colleague and getting, making sure the grading system worked and making sure it was useful for both faculty, my adjunct faculty, and our students. We wanted to make sure that we had created courses that we could then copy to our adjunct faculty. So, you know, freeway flyers often don't have a lot of extra time to be putting in 60 or 70 hours to design, redesign Canvas courses. So I feel like the time I spent, you know, probably close to over 100 hours and continue to spend time on it, really could have been spent, you know, keeping up in my field or writing activities for my students. And I'm not unhappy now to be using Canvas, but I think that some compensation for faculty would really make us feel like the work we did was, you know, was worth something because it was a really an amazing amount of work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next up is Kurt Meyer.
Thank you, President Jamal, Board of Trustees, and Student Trustee Larson. My name is Kurt Meyer, and I try to teach writing and literature at Irvine Valley College. And I'm here on behalf of my colleague Jamie Poster, who is a professor of Film Studies and the Chair of the Humanities at Irvine Valley College. And she says, "I've been teaching online for two decades. When I was a grad student at Georgetown, we beta-tested a new exciting learning platform called Blackboard. Since then, I've worked with every iteration of that system, as well as Moodle, Joomla, WebCT, D2L, OnNet, and now Canvas. Every time I've switched platforms, I've put hours and hours into researching, designing, troubleshooting, tweaking, and building. This switch from Blackboard to Canvas has been no different from the others in terms of ease. There are always, always, hours of labor following any effort to automate this transition. This past summer, I decided to use some of my time off to adapt my two fully online courses for Canvas. I kept meticulous records of time spent on the transition in the event that I would need to advocate for proper compensation in the future. In total, it took me 46 hours for one class and 28 hours for the other. The second one benefited from the research and troubleshooting I conducted for the first course. I used two operating systems, four browsers, six software suites, three cloud services, and watched countless Canvas tutorials. Those 74 hours of work remain uncompensated, and I continue to devote my time to optimizing and troubleshooting. I strongly urge the Board of Trustees to honor the offer previously made by the district and accepted by the Faculty Association. And I don't teach online for courses. My strengths lie elsewhere, but I utilize Blackboard as an essential learning management system for blogs, for discussion boards, for grading, for reading and writing assignments. And I'm a better teacher for it, and my students' success depends on it. Please consider compensating faculty for the work they do. Thank you."
Thank you. Next up is Allison Camelot.
I won't restate what's already been stated. My experience so far, I converted one class to Canvas this semester. I took a week-long Canvas class. I had a weekly standing appointment with the Faculty Center for one-on-one assistance for six weeks. I logged in 31 hours on the Canvas system doing work before the class even started, and that didn't include any type of rewriting instructions, orientation, or anything outside of Canvas. That was just while I was in Canvas. I've experienced four issues with Canvas since then where I had to go back to the Faculty Center and spend hours trying to fix the issue and deal with telling students instructions on how to navigate through things. This was one course. I teach five different online courses over the course of a year. So five different ones, plus I teach on-campus courses as well, and I use Blackboard for those classes as well. Originally moving this away from the agenda, I was very confused by that. I was shocked. I found that very disrespectful. By not having compensation for our work, it just makes us feel not valued. It probably can't even compare to the amount of hours that we are, we did and are going to do, but it's just disrespectful. I've spent an enormous amount of my free time, which is already not very much, and I've actually missed some family time. I won't tell you about my daughter's basketball game where she scored six threes that I missed. For those of you that care about basketball that I'm missing right now, there's games on that I'm here instead. And the amount of extra work that this creates, I think this should be a priority. You want our students to have good, quality classes, and mine are good, quality classes. That's how much time it takes to do that.
Thank you. Claire Cesario.
You might wanna tell us who's on deck, and then people can line up.
Okay. On deck is Barbara, is it Tamaias?
Thanks. Okay, good evening. I'm also here to speak to the proposed Canvas conversion compensation proposal that was negotiated between the district and the Faculty Association over a period of about six months. What you have before you is the final counterproposal offered by the district, which was accepted by the Faculty Association. As a faculty member who was one of the first in our district to start teaching fully online courses, I want to speak to the fairness of the proposal in valuing the work of faculty members. This work goes above and beyond what we are compensated for in our base salary. I started teaching online in 2001. Teaching an online course in a community college is very different than teaching in any of the four-year institutions, which provide instructional designers to take content and put it into online versions, and which also generally provide teaching assistance to facilitate the ongoing online discussions. In the community colleges, we are required to do all of this ourselves. We have never received compensation to develop our initial online courses, although it required hours of work as well. Now we are converting to a new system, which has necessitated that I not only learn a new system, but also redesign my course to work within the new LMS, reconstruct documents, including instructions for my students on how to navigate the course, and reformat course materials. This is all work for which we have not been compensated. For each three-unit course, we are paid for six hours of work each week, which includes prepping for courses, conducting the classes, and grading. In my online courses, I spend far more hours than this per class on a regular basis, reading the course materials, revising lectures, which I do every semester, participating in classroom discussions, which occur seven days a week, answering emails and grading online work, which requires extensive annotations. The conversion, working for teaching just one course that I started this fall, took me approximately 100 hours over the summer. I think my course is stellar, and I believe that my students benefit from all the effort that I have put into it. I do it for my students and because I'm a professional, but I want my work to be recognized and valued. Therefore, I hope that you will honor this agreement that was made and approve this item. Thank you.
Okay, and next up, after you, is Mary Hom? Hom? Hum? Okay. I don't know. I tried.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Tomalis, and I co-chair the Child Development and Education Department here at Saddleback. We have 30 different courses in our department, all of which are offered both online and on campus, and some are offered in a hybrid format. Our faculty have worked together for many, many years to make sure that our courses are high-quality. Our next meeting together is in two weeks on a Saturday night. And with this move to Canvas, we have all been very worried about it because we all have so many online courses. I teach six different ones myself over the course of a year. And when we talked with the rep from Canvas, one of the questions that I asked him was, well, how long do you think it would take to transfer our courses into this new format? And he said, if he were doing it with all of his expertise, because he was the Canvas guru who was telling us, it would be 20 to 40 hours per course. If you don't know Canvas, it's a lot more than that. And that's been exactly my experience. I have done my first course this semester, and it has taken, it took me about 40 hours to even get to where I could be before the course opened. And then it is ongoing every week because there's always something new. I really like Canvas. I think it's gonna be a great system for us, but it is like learning a whole new language. And as Claire said, in our system, it's up to us to do everything related to that. And so while we're continually trying to do a stellar job of offering online learning, this has been a huge additional amount of work, even if we spread it out over the course of the year and a half that we have to do it. So I urge you to respect the faculty, full-time and part-time, who are working so hard on this. Any amount of compensation would probably not equal the hours people are putting in, but just offering some compensation, I think, acknowledges the work that people are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Mary is Margot Lovett.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hama, and I am a adjunct faculty member in Early Childhood Education. And I put in nine wonderful years of Blackboard instruction. And I think I'm an expert, right, Claire?
I took the online educator program, teaching certificate program here, too. Now I'm not an expert, but I am teaching mostly online. And my load as a part-time faculty member is three eight-week condensed compressed online classes. That means 135 students. That means over 300 discussion boards a week, 300 assignments, and three other problems or questions or concerns from students. That is a lot of hours. I'm facing this in January. So what I'm doing now is I have Monday through Wednesday, I have a block schedule with the Faculty Design Center, and I have one-on-one instruction. And then after this one and a half hours of one-on-one instruction for Canvas, I have four hours that I have to go home and prepare for the next instruction the following day for the conversion that will take place for me with 135 students next semester. And please do not forget the 300 assignments and discussion boards I'm talking about. My students deserve the same quality that I'm providing for them after having nine years of Blackboard training, which I love. I'm not afraid of technology. I love technology. And I am really at a point where I'm not an expert at all, but I'm willing to be. And so are my colleagues. And I would appreciate your consideration and compensate us for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Just pause for a second. Next up is Jenny Langrell.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Margot Lovett, and I teach History and Gender Studies at Saddleback College. Others tonight have spoken and will continue to speak about the extraordinary amount of work required to convert online courses from Blackboard to Canvas, so I will not repeat their comments here. Instead, I want to speak about something far more personal: respect and professionalism. Both full-time and part-time faculty at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College are professionals, and we deserve to be recognized, respected, and treated as such. All of us have advanced degrees in our field, and many of us spent years earning PhDs. We put in far more hours than we were contractually required to do in order to provide our students with the best education possible. In no other field are professionals routinely expected to work for free, yet we do so on a regular basis. But we have done enough volunteer work, and fairness dictates that we be paid for the hours we will need to devote to converting our classes from Blackboard to Canvas. An awful lot of lip service gets paid to how valuable the faculty are, but now it is time to back up that talk with action. The chancellor and the district have recognized that the faculty are professionals and deserve to be respected as such. They have agreed that we must be paid for the work we do. Now I ask the board to do what is right, to stop expecting the faculty to volunteer our time and to honor the agreement that has been negotiated between the Faculty Association and the district. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Jenny, if you could hold for a second. Next up is Brett Maru. Okay.
Hi, and thank you. My name's Jenny Langrell, and I am a full-time faculty member at Saddleback, but I am reading this for Nicole Major, who cannot be here tonight. As I am a full-time faculty member for the past three years and part-time for eight years prior, I have been dedicated to Saddleback College, student success, adhering to many challenges, changes that the college has made along the way. As a teacher who has a large percentage of her load in online instruction, the decision to move from Blackboard to Canvas was one that significantly impacts my workload. I also use the online learning management system to complete my face-to-face instruction and enhance the learning environment. I know this is the case for many teachers. Regardless of being in part-time, full-time, or the modality of the class, this move to a new LMS is substantial. It requires to spend significant amount of time to learn the system, meet one-on-one with the Faculty Center on a consistent basis for ask questions, and to migrate all of our courses to the new system. This doesn't just happen with one click of a button. Every instruction, announcement, procedure, module has to be changed, checked, to reflect the new system. In preparing for my fall class online, for my fall online course this summer, I spent 35 hours logging in to get ready. This does not include all the time I spend changing assignments in Word, meeting with the Faculty Center with additional questions. In addition, I took one at one, excuse me, Canvas class, which was 40 hours. I have several other classes that I'm working on in my free time to convert. Please consider a request for payment for these additional work hours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then after Brett, the last requested speaker is Christina Gonbepour.
Good evening. So this is a joint statement from me, Brett Myron, and from April Covage. We're both the faculty coordinators for online education at Saddleback College. Speaking as teachers and as coordinators of online education at Saddleback, we want to express our strong support for the Canvas stipend. Over the past several years, we have devoted many hours to online education, including piloting Canvas at Saddleback, leading the LMS evaluation, and teaching the online education certificate. Perhaps most importantly, we have worked hard to build a coalition of faculty who would be willing to try something new for the good of the students, the college, and the district. Some history. When we first started as online coordinators at Saddleback, skepticism about moving to Canvas was extremely high. Many faculty, for reasons that are understandable, were reluctant to move their materials from one system to another. However, over the course of roughly two years and many meetings, faculty decided to make a good-faith effort to switch to Canvas with the understanding that they would have administrative support. It is not difficult to imagine the sense of dismay that many faculty feel when they hear that they may not be compensated for that extra work, which goes far beyond normal preparation for teaching. Though the total stipend may seem large, that figure is a reflection of the many teachers involved. As experienced teachers of online education, we can assure you that on an individual basis, faculty would actually receive less than their normal hourly wage for the time required to move their content to Canvas. However, we also want the board to know that this issue impacts the future of the district. If faculty feel that they are not supported by the district in these endeavors, we are extremely concerned that the fragile coalition of support for Canvas may disintegrate. In fact, we may lose support for other innovative ideas in the future. As you know, Saddleback College is a leader in online education. We have a program that is currently among the top three in California. We have success rates that are the envy of other colleges. We could potentially have the best online education program in the state. However, we could easily lose what we have worked so hard to accomplish. For all of these reasons, we respectfully ask that you consider those teachers who have done so much to bring us where we are today and approve the Canvas stipend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all for patiently waiting as we get through all of these comments. My name is Christina Gonbepour, and I am Chair of the Gender and Sexuality Studies Department and also co-chair of the History Department. With my colleague Allison Camelot, who spoke earlier, as well as several members of my division, I helped co-write the Distance Education Plan for Accreditation, and I served on both the LMS and the Online Education Committees during the period of debate regarding the transition to Canvas. As such, I cannot emphasize enough how important a strong online education program is. And it is also important to give faculty incentives to put in the hard work of building that program. Online education is not only important to our students but to the college as a whole. It is the future of education. And when and if Saddleback College does decide to join the Online Education Exchange, the OEI, our students will be shopping around. That is why I think it is important to give faculty the resources and incentives to build a strong program now so that they can focus on building the best courses that they can, and that includes compensating them for the work that we hope that they will do to keep building great online courses. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? All right. Now move on to reports, and I'd like to start with Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. It was a short time between our last two meetings, but in October, I did attend two special board meetings. For the sake of time, just to let you know, they're very, very worthwhile. Yes, they do take our time, but it's over and above our scheduled closed and open sessions. I also attended the Saddleback Foundation Board Meeting. I am the representative for the Foundation Board, and I really enjoy that, again, because we're trying to raise money for scholarships, and I'm all about scholarships. So I'll just pass it on.
Thanks, Terry, and thanks to all of you who were speaking today. I just want to give my sincere thanks to the incredible students, professors, and staff, both at Saddleback College and at Irvine Valley College, for their kindness, compassion, and caring. You all worked so hard to raise the $4,137 to assist the students and staff of the devastated Houston Community College system. I actually asked if I could bring the check with me and my scheduled check to Houston. It was much more personal, and no taxpayer money was spent because I paid for the trip myself, not even for a stamp to mail the check. The devastation from Hurricane Harvey was terrible, but students and staff at the Coleman College for Health Science were already back at work. And this biology teacher loved playing with their 3D heart models, the digital human bodies, and their simulation labs. Their foundation president, Mary Williams, said she loved hearing how the funds were collected by our students to benefit the HCC students that were affected so severely by Hurricane Harvey. And she said, "To know that your students, faculty, and staff have such compassion is heartwarming, and it helps to restore our faith in humanity." This college is the only community college within the Texas Medical Center, which is the largest medical center in the world. And the community college offers an impressive array of medical professions, including nursing, physical therapy, and surgical tech, about 60 different professions. Coming back, I had to attend our, of course, I had to attend our own Saddleback College paramedic graduation. We have the only community college paramedic graduation program in Orange County, and it's a fabulous one. And our students work hard. They're trained so well, and they get great jobs in our community, and they're our paramedics, and they're the best local paramedics in Orange County. I also attended the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, and in that we're, which I founded, and we are discussing priorities for 2018 in that organization. And some of the federal items that we're discussing and we're supporting, including help for DACA students and protecting tax deductions for student loans, among other things. And speaking of immigrants, I love the Irvine Valley College student production of West Side Story, written by Arthur Lorenz with an incredible story score by Leonard Bernstein. This musical is relevant today with its exploration of love, prejudice, and violence. The house was fully packed with students who expressed their appreciation with loud clapping, cheering, and a standing ovation. We do great work at our colleges, and I'm so proud of both of them. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, in the interest of time, I'm going to keep my remarks fairly short now, because I also want to speak at length later when we talk about the Canvas item. In the meantime, I appreciate the fact that Trustee Jamal, in his opening invocation, thanked our veterans. I want to remember them and the great debt of gratitude that we all have to them, and wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
Yes, I did attend several events in the last two weeks. One, on Tuesday, November the 7th, I attended the Veterans Day Commemoration Event at Irvine Valley College. Students, faculty, staff, and guests gathered to honor those who have served our country. Veteran student Mike Decker, U.S. Air Force, gave the Pledge of Allegiance, and Vice President of Student Services and also Air Force veteran Dr. Linda Fontanella spoke about her service. And then we had a talk by Lieutenant Colonel Troy Alexander. He's U.S. Army and commander of the U.S. Army Recruiting Battalion, and he talked about his military experience. Then on November the 4th, I attended the Veterans Appreciation Football Game at Saddleback College. They played Palmore College that evening and won 35 to 13. At halftime, all veterans were honored, and two scholarships were presented by Vets Program Coordinator Terrence Nelson to two Saddleback College student veterans. It was interesting, they had each of the people who were there stand or come forward. Did they serve in World War II? Did they serve in Korea? Did they serve in Vietnam and other things? And it was interesting to see how many stepped forward for Vietnam. So that was the generation that I served. Also, I want to report that the Saddleback College football team has finished their regular season. They had a record of eight and two, and they did qualify for regional playoffs. The Saddleback football team has, will play in the Southern California Regional Playoffs and will play against top-seeded Fullerton College this Saturday, November the 8th, at Whittier College at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you, Trustee Wright. Before I forget, I want to congratulate Capital Valley High School, Mark Bluth and his son, for reaching the quarterfinals of Division Four, and my own son's school, Mission Viejo, reaching the quarterfinals. So we got a big game this Friday against Ole Lutheran. We've had a short couple of weeks. I had to go to Michigan to tend to some family issues, but we've been spending a lot of time on succession planning here. And I hope, and as you saw in our announcement last time, we're going to bring forward a new acting and possibly then interim chancellor very shortly, and we're excited about that. The board, I think, acted quickly and I think in the best interests of the district. Yeah, I find, I didn't attend any other meetings. It was a short couple of weeks, but I find, occasionally reflect on this job a little bit and the role of the trustee and the role of the board here and your role. It's great to see so many people coming forward and speaking tonight. I think the Faculty Association is doing what it should do, and it advocates for the interests, what they feel the interests of their members. And then we, as a board, act what I feel should be the interests of the entire district. And usually those stars align on most occasions. I must say, and I'm not lecturing, you know, last month, we passed a resolution supportive Dreamers. I didn't get a single letter of expression of support from anybody. Now, I'm not lecturing you. I mean, I thought what we did was a big step forward. So what I ask of you, everyone, is occasionally look at doing something that's greater than yourself. And I know you do that in your daily lives, but I felt like we took an important step last meeting. I had more letters of opposition personally, because I happen to be the board president, than in support. But I thought it was the right thing to do, and you saw it was unanimous vote. So I think that, you know, we all have to step back on occasions and do what we feel is in our own interests and the community's interests. So we support everything that goes on here. I was surprised I didn't get as many, any letters of support, really. I don't know if the chancellor did, but I think you have a lot of, you have a good board here that's very supportive of what goes on in this district. Thank you. Trustee Jay.
I attended two special, the two special board meetings also. And then Tuesday, November the 7th, I attended the Irvine Valley College Foundation Board Governor's Meeting. This meeting was very well-attended. A financial report and audit review was given by Eric Roke. Professor Matt Tressler gave a report on music at IVC, which was very interesting. What we do in music at IVC. They're serving 1,500 students, music students. They have 25 classes in music, an AA in music, six performing ensembles, about 35 musical performances a year, which is amazing. They give out music scholarships. And one of the most interesting things was the Master Corral will travel to Salzburg Choral Festival this next year. That was truly wonderful. Astounding Events will be Saturday, January 27, 2018, in the gym at IVC. And the Foundation Awards Dinner, everybody please mark this down, will be March 10, 2018. That's a Saturday at the Tulip Rose. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Thank you. Just a real quick report here. First off, November 6th was College Fair Night in Tuscaloosa Unified School District. It was well-attended. In fact, I actually ran into people I knew from other districts that had heard about it and wanted to meet colleges. And so I thought it was really, really nice to see how well-represented IVC and Saddleback were at that college fair. And IVC actually had an entire row to themselves. They took over the whole thing. It was really kind of funny. But well-represented in both colleges, and so it was really nice to see. Also wanted to take an opportunity to thank Trustee Lang for his leadership in the Audit Committee. We had our special meeting today to the final report. Many thanks to the people that have been working on that with the Audit Committee. We got a clean bill of health, and we're doing things right and managing the money properly, and nothing got lost, which is good. So that was the end of my report.
Thank you. Student Trustee Lars.
Yeah, just one notable item. These past two weeks, I started the Saddleback Business Club. I ran into a few of you on campus and asked for a generous donation. The point of this club is to bring students together and to teach them real-life skills in business and to ultimately generate a scholarship for a, one or several special students. So far, we've accumulated $100, and our goal is $500 by the end of the year. I will keep you updated on that. And with every donation, you get a complimentary succulent pot. So if you're interested, please see me after this meeting. Other than that, I wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we do not have a chancellor's report tonight, and I'll move on to the college presidents' reports. And I'm not going to guess who's going first, because I get it wrong every meeting.
You get it wrong.
Every meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I would like to thank Trustee Wright for attending our Veterans Program that we had on November 7th. Stated very well. One thing I want to emphasize is United States Air Force veteran Dr. Linda Fontanella, I thought, gave a very compelling keynote speech, better than any that I think I have ever heard. And she talked about what went on that led to her enlistment, what happened during her time in service, and then time afterwards. And just a great talk. I just wanted to mention that to everybody here. I had the honor to go and welcome our PTK students, Phi Theta Kappa International Honor Society students. They held the Nevada-California Phi Theta Kappa Leadership Conference at Cal Poly Pomona. And it's always a thrill to spend time with those students. There's so much energy. It's absolutely unbelievable. The whole program was put together by Professors Alana Rosenberg from Saddleback, Jody Titus, and Kurt Meyer, who you met just earlier, co-hosted this event, and it was fantastic. And then finally, the Teacher of the Year event that's put on by the Orange County Department of Education. I would like to congratulate Professor Michael Cassens one more time for his nomination for Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chancellor for Technology. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board, and I'll keep my comments short on only two subjects. First of all, I want to thank and express my deep gratitude to the community surrounding the college and to the students, staff, and faculty of the college, who are continuing to be very generous in their welcome of me and demonstrating the selflessness that educational leaders from all of those ranks provide in their everyday work. So I'm very grateful to everybody for continuing to allow my honeymoon period to continue. The only other thing I would like to do is to introduce pending board approval. I'd like to introduce the new interim executive director of the Foundation for Saddleback College. And she's in the audience, and if you can raise your hand. For those of you who may not know Winnie Johnson, you will get to know her because she's already well-known in the community. She's well-known as a community leader. She's well-known as somebody who forges relationships among community partners, community-based organizations, among individuals who seek to invest in the educational success of our students. And she has already started meeting with more potential donors and started to understand the strengths of what we've got going already and is going to be building on that. So we're thrilled to have her. She comes to us most recently, let me start where she originally comes from, which is Wisconsin. So that's a good sign already. But most recently, she comes from Mission Hospital in, right here in Mission Viejo, where she was the senior vice president for philanthropy, and she will be developing even further the culture of philanthropy that we have at Saddleback College. Welcome, Winnie. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Now we have associated student governments. I think we're starting with IVC.
Hello. Good evening. I will also follow in suit in keeping my report short. So AICU, IVC, and Inter Club and Co-Curricular Council are hosting our first annual Volunteer Fair this upcoming Thursday, November 16th. We have 11 different organizations coming out and working together with the clubs on campus to get various types of donations from students, such as food, books, or toys, depending on the organization. So we have a list of organizations, such as UCP of OC, Mercy House, Illumination Foundation, et cetera. So we are preparing for that this upcoming Thursday, and we're really excited about that. Also, IVC Homecoming Elections Court, no, IVC Homecoming Court Elections, the voting will start tomorrow. It will open tomorrow and Wednesday, only for two days. And so the official homecoming candidate will then be announced on November 17th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College.
Thank you. About two weeks ago, myself, Samantha, a student from Saddleback College, and another student from Irvine Valley College, as well as Terry Flugman, we had a meeting with Congressman Walters' staff to discuss Dream Act, and it was a really healthy and productive conversation. And we're looking to meeting with them a couple more times within the next, within the upcoming year to discuss what we can do to help with the act. Additionally, last week, we had our Vets Week, or Veterans Week, and it was organized by our Veterans Student Council, and it was really well-attended each day. And I think it was a great way for the general student population to meet student veterans and engage in conversation with them. In addition, last Thursday, we concluded our Mental Health Awareness Series, in which about once or twice a week, we hosted a workshop with our Student Health Center, educating students about different topics regarding mental health, and it was a great way for them to learn about the different resources that the Student Health Center provides. And today, I attended the Title IX Training, and I thought it was really informative and very happy that I had the opportunity to attend. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We have no discussion, oh, sorry, are there any board requests for reports? I don't see any. We don't have a discussion item tonight? Probably. People are happy about that. And let's move on to the consent calendar, 5.0. Does anyone have any polls? Any others? All right. Is there a motion to move the balance? There is. A motion from Trustee Prendergast and a second from Trustee Lang. Any further discussion? All right. Let's go ahead and vote.
Where is link to vote?
It's coming. There we go. Let's see. The remainder of the consent items are moved on a seven to zero, trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Trustee Wright, you have the floor of 5.9.
It's just...
The remainder of the consent items are moved on a 7 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Trustee Wright, you have the floor of 5.9.
It's just a small correction. It was on page 1 of Exhibit A. It says March 21st through 23rd, 2017. It really should say 2018. These are two events. The next one is April 22nd to 25th. It should be 2018. That was all.
That's correct on mine?
Is it correct on mine?
Not on my version.
Not on mine either.
It also says San Antonio, DC on our version.
All right, so was that your question, Trustee Prendergast? All right. So I have this corrected? Said, all right. Is there a motion to?
With the correction.
With the corrections to move the item? A motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and vote. And 5.9 is approved by 7 to 0 trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. We're now on to General Action Items. And we are now at Board Agenda Item 6.1, South Orange County Community College District ATEP Easement Agreement with Cox Communications California LLC Public Hearing. Before we have that public hearing, Vice President of Business, Vice Chancellor of Business Services Jim Weiss will provide an introduction.
Thank you. This agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the district to enter into an easement with Cox Communications California LLC for utility purposes to maintain underground communication facilities on the ATEP site that will service both the IVC first building and provide future capacity for Phase 1 of the ATEP site. There is one additional board item tonight that relates to this public hearing, and that's Item 6.2. If you have any questions, staff will be prepared to address them.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions to staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Board, Item 6.1, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Comments are not to exceed five minutes. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? 6.1 is now concluded. We will now move to Item 6.2, ATEP Site Utilities and Infrastructure Phase 1 Project. Is there a motion to approve this item? Oh, motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Any further, any discussion? Go ahead and vote. Motion carries by 7 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We're now on to 6.3, Saddleback College Study Abroad Program in, I haven't been here, Salamanca, Spain, February 16th, 2018 to April 28th, 2018. We have a motion to approve this item from Trustee Milchikir. Don't yet have a second. We do now. Second from Trustee Jay. And question from Trustee Witt.
I don't have a question. I just want to say how appreciative I am for the leadership in this Study Abroad Program. I attended several times the orientation as a representative from the Board for Travel Abroad, and I'm very impressed with what they do in Spain. And I particularly like the schedule. You know, when you go, think you're going away and going far off places. You can do this, that, and the other. Well, you better look at your page to find out what you're going to do. And I like that, that an instructor takes the time and the students respect that, respect the schedule. And as I understand from friends of my son who have gone to this study abroad, it is vigorous. And I just wanted to say thank you, especially to Carmen and all the, from the liberal arts. And I just, I'm appreciative of that. And all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
All right. Thank you for that comment. I agree with it. All right, so we have a motion from Trustee Milchikir, second from Trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. And we have a 7 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. Now, on to 6.4, recess.
This is Oxford.
We're on 6.4, Saddleback College. I thought I was reading the same item, Study Abroad to Oxford, England, March 15th, 2018 to May 18th, 2018. And we have a motion from Trustee Lang, a second from Trustee Jay to approve the item. Any questions? No. Let's go ahead and vote. A unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.5, Board Policy Revision, Board Policy 4011.6, Hiring of the Chancellor. Is there a motion to approve the item? It's a motion from Trustee Milchikir and a second from Trustee Witt, and a question from Trustee Lang, and then Trustee Milchikir.
Yes, I had asked for there to be a correction to this item. And maybe it's been made, but it's not in my copy here. There's an item number 1 that has nothing associated with it. And so the numbering makes no sense in this item. I think it should be 1, 2, 3 instead of 1 with nothing, 2, 3, 4. And so I would ask that that correction be made.
Okay. All right. And Trustee Milchikir.
I have a similar comment. This is a very important item. It's the recruitment of the Chancellor. And it, as we've been doing for a long time, we've been making the board policies very small and the administrative regs much longer and more detailed. So I agree with that. Because there's so many crossouts of the 20-page board policy, it makes it difficult to read. I'd like it to come back, like Trustee Lang said, with what the?
Without the red lines?
Without the red lines. One with the red lines and one without the red lines. So we can read it and make sure that it's a coherent board policy. Because we're recruiting a Chancellor right now. This is an important board policy for us to follow.
So are you going to amend your motion to?
Oh, yeah. I amend my motion that this be brought back with a copy of the board policy without all the red lines in it, with Trustee Lang's comments, making sure that the numbering is correct and so that we could read it more clearly.
Okay. So do you want to go ahead and, well, I guess then if we're not, are you still motioning to approve the item? Or do you want to postpone the item until you see the clean version?
I'd like to postpone the, unless we need it right away. I'd like to postpone the item until we see the clean version. Is that possible?
You can amend your own motion to postpone the consideration.
I think I have to accept the amendment. But if I may, if I may. In the printed version, in the printed version of them, they have that.
Oh, they have in the printed version. That's what Terry was, we have the online version. So where's, I've been doing it online for like six years now. Okay.
If you go all the way past all the strikeouts, they have it as Exhibit A.1. It's already there.
No, I don't have it in my online version.
Yeah, keep going. Keep scrolling.
No, I have.
A1 is the administration regulations.
Oh, that's in.
That's where they've moved all of the items to.
Because, yeah, the initial board policy was one out of 20 pages. And that's been just redlined completely. And then they've added, I guess, probably a brand-new administrative regulation. That's fine. That's easy to read, and that's 20 pages.
But if she, I don't, she's the maker of the motion, Trustee Lang. I think she's allowed to amend.
I'm the maker of the motion.
I have, well, mine shows Marcia.
Uh-oh.
Marcia and Terry.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
So I.
Yeah, it's okay.
So what would you like to do, Trustee Milchikir?
Well, I'd like to, I mean, I don't see the original one. It's not, that's a little easier to read. And with Trustee Lang's corrections in it, also the numbering corrections. So I'd like to bring it back, unless that's a problem, to bring it back for the next board meeting.
I don't. Well. So Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, I mean, we have already, we've already begun the process to hire a permanent Chancellor through advertising and getting the word out, I suppose. So if this is delayed till December 11th, I think it is, I guess, to fall back to the old version until such time as that this becomes the board policy. Which is, I don't think it's going to change anything.
So it is true that the position for Chancellor has been flown and is currently being recruited for.
Yeah, it really is.
I would probably guide the Board to not make changes once that process has begun. This, I'm understanding, has been in the works prior to this recruitment. Is that correct?
I have, I don't remember seeing this.
Yes, that is correct.
That is correct.
It is.
This is the second, this is the second reading.
This is.
Yeah, my guidance for the Board would be to take action tonight based on the fact that there's a current recruitment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you okay?
I withdraw my.
Your motion to postpone?
My motion, I just, I just thought it would be a little easier to.
So if the administration could provide trustees a non-redlined copy of the board policy?
We can do that.
Yes, that would be helpful. And if that's the one uploaded, you're saying it's not uploaded online yet? We haven't approved it yet, so it wouldn't be up yet.
We can assure you that the next board policies that come forward, we can make sure that there is a non-redlined version, a final, a final version of that policy.
A final version would be like that, and I'd like to see it too. And what about your question?
Well, I think mine's a fairly ministerial change that can easily be made without any difficulty.
Trustee Witt.
I do believe that when you read up here administrative regulations, as I looked at it and go, whoa, this is different. It's not. Look down at the next line, Recruitment Chancellor, over here, Recruitment Chancellor.
Right, right. Trustee Witt, these are the administrative regulations that support the board policy.
Yeah, there's two things. There's the board policy is the first part.
You've got condensed board policy supported by much lengthier and detailed administrative regulations.
Okay. But it does, it does address the same, and that's why I read back and forth. And it does address it. It's weird. They're just going to have to repeat it.
No, no, no. What we've been doing, we used to have very lengthy board policies that were lengthy and were just really difficult for staff to deal with. So what we determined a number of years ago is to make very short and specific board policies followed by lengthy prescriptive.
We're not there yet, though, making that transformation.
Administrative regulations. So that's, so that's what this is. So there's two parts. There's the board policy followed by the administrative, I call it administrative regs, but administrative regulations. And I did, was able to call Deborah and ask her a lot of questions, but I didn't ask her about this one. So, but I'll be okay with it as long as you provide us with a clean copy of it, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You okay? All right. Any other questions? Okay, we had a motion second. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Board Policy Revision is approved by a 7 to 0 vote and a student advisory yes vote. We're now at Board Agenda Item 6.6, Regarding a Public Hearing on the District Initial Proposal to the South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viscachill will provide an introduction.
Board President, members of the Board, this item is here for public hearing. It is an opportunity to provide the public with the chance to comment on the district's initial proposal to the South Orange County Community College District's Faculty Association. Having said that, I'm happy to answer any questions as we proceed.
Does the Board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Board Item 6.6, The Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Item 6.6 is concluded. The Board will vote on adoption of the district's initial proposal on Agenda Item 6.8.
You skipped 6.7, I think.
I'm on to it right now. We're now in recess to public hearing, South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association, Initial Proposal of the District. The Board will conduct a public hearing and provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association's initial proposal. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viscachill will provide an introduction.
Again, thank you, Board President and Board Members. This is again a public hearing. It provides the public with an opportunity to speak to the initial proposal presented to the district by the Faculty Association. Again, I'm happy to answer questions as we proceed.
Does the Board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Board Item 6.7, The Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Seeing none. Item 6.7 is now concluded. So we're on to 6.8, Adopt District Initial Proposal to South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association. Is there a motion to approve the item? There's a motion from Trustee Wright, second from Trustee Prendergast. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion to approve is carried by a 7 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. We're now on to 6.9, Academic and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions.
Board President, there's a correction on this I need to point out. On page 6 of 6, it has been corrected to say Step 7, not Step 8, related to the Classified Administrative Position Promotion that's related to the Vice President of College and Administrative Services. So this is specifically related to employee Devit, and I do apologize.
Tatiana.
There you go. That comes from a Viscachill, by the way. So that is a.
You get one pass at one meeting.
Thank you. Day 5. So that would be correction to Step 7, not 8. That would be what we'd ask in the Board to approve.
Thank you for that correction. All right. And do we have a motion to approve the item? We have a motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Any other discussions? Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. By the way, it still says on my screen that Saddleback College ASG is the current speaker. She's already left, so I get it. Okay. We're now on to Item 6.10, Classified Personnel Actions. Is there a motion to approve the item?
Were there any corrections?
Well, are there any corrections or changes to the item?
I don't have any.
Trustee Witt, do you have a question about a correction? But I think we need a motion first. Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Prendergast, and a question from Trustee Witt.
I would like to table C, the Reorganization 1B, because I can't vote for a position to eliminate it when that position doesn't exist. That position is never.
Can we get a clarification on that?
Yes, you may. Trustee Witt is correct. My records reflect that that item was put on the Board Agenda for April 24th and then pulled. It was resubmitted May 15th, 2017, and the Board pulled it. And then I do have the page from the May 15th meeting that it was put on, and that item does not appear. So according to my staff, the second.
Point to me where, what.
So on page 5 of 8, under B, C 1B, the second item, Director of Marketing Communications. Communications, and Community Relations, I do not show any evidence that the board approved that item as a position that is...
So you're saying, what Trustee Witt is saying, we can eliminate a position that doesn't exist? Is that what, what?
I believe that to be correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, then it, all right. Well, we have a motion to... Well, I need to ask, we, well, we have a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Prendergast to approve the item. So Trustee Witt is, is asking to amend the motion, to amend the item.
I will accept that.
Okay.
But you can't amend it because it doesn't exist.
Yeah, we're amending it to, for what, what you've requested, to pull it.
To pull it, yes.
Table it, yes.
Yes, for next time.
So that's the amendment.
Sorry.
So the, the, I guess what the amendment, Trustee Witt, is, is to table one?
C1B.
C1B. Is that?
Correct.
Well, let me, are you asking to table the entire item or just to strike the?
No, to table C1B, the whole thing.
That's what I thought she was saying.
It, it all is related.
So if I may, Board President, the way you could do it is table C1, all of C1B, which is those four positions, the two eliminate, two replace, and then the board could move on C1, C, and D.
No, I think that, I, I think that's what, I think that's what she's saying.
Correct.
Okay.
Just B.
Yes, I'm, I'm tabling C1B. There are four paragraphs there.
The first position does exist, the Executive Director for Public and Government Affairs.
So why would we strike that out if it does exist?
Which, which is the one that doesn't.
The one that does not exist, or that has not been approved by the board, is the Director of Marketing, Communications, and Community Relations.
So what you would, if I, so what she's saying it needs, I think, well, you, I don't want to speak for you, what?
But the two replaces are related to the second one. So you're tabling the whole thing, and that first position is just gonna have to wait until it comes back.
I, I think it needs to come back.
Yeah. So that's what it is.
It, it's, it's not entirely clear to me, but I do believe the first and second items in B relate to the two replacement positions collectively. I think that's how it was envisioned.
Right.
Right.
But if the blightum doesn't exist, if the position doesn't exist, there's, it seems like there wouldn't be a replacement because it's not going to exist.
That is correct.
So then you'd have to...
But the first position does exist.
Does exist.
And so, so by eliminating the whole thing.
I think it needs to be recrafted and come back.
So do you, you're the maker of the motion. Do you accept the?
I accept that.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we need a second, though, on her amendment.
Yeah, I, I accept it.
Okay, so we have a second. And I, my understanding is that we have to, then we can, if you accept it, then we'll vote.
You vote on the item as amended.
We'll vote on the item now, okay?
As amended.
As amended.
I need to be clear on this.
Okay.
We are voting on this to be amended for next time.
C1B is being stricken from, lifted from this item.
Okay, so now we're, we're voting on C1C and D.
Well, the balance of the entire 6.10.
The balance, all right.
You okay?
Yeah.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote on that. The motion with the amendment carries by a seven to zero vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.11, 2018, 2019, Tenure Track Hiring Authorization. We, do we have a motion to approve? We do. Trustee Milchker, and then a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions or discussions? Trustee Witt?
Just help me out here. It says here, new, new position to be approved by Board of Trustees and vacant previously approved. All right. So we look at student, both of those special programs, they're in counseling or transfer counselor, they're brand-new tenure positions? Want to be clear on that. We're looking at a brand-new tenure, so we're adding two positions to the counseling center. But when you say categorical funding, just help me out on that one. I didn't know we had categorical funding for, for counseling.
I'm sorry, I don't have that item in my board agenda, so I'm not sure.
Which, 6.11?
I don't, yeah, I only have, apparently, they've only prepared for me certain numbers. And I do not have 6 points.
Do you want to borrow mine?
Yeah, we, we get ours online, or someone must do.
You can look at it.
I think Jim's gonna lend you his.
Well, you can get a bigger screen than that.
So the question, the question is related to counseling?
Mm-hmm.
The student equity special programs?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, what was the question?
The, the funding, I just wanted to know what, what grant that funding was coming from.
Yes, both of these positions would be funded by either the student equity funds or, I believe this is student equity funds. I have also seen them with Triple SP, but I think these are equity funds.
Okay, so being categorical, we're not looking at tenure here?
They are categorically funded positions, that's correct. And there are certain legal requirements that have to adhere to even categorical positions from year to year.
Okay.
Meaning that if these individuals ultimately apply for positions that are full-time, permanent, you could have the circumstance where the year prior or the two years prior that they served in these positions would count toward tenure.
That's what I want. Okay, you answered it. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion from Trustee Milchker and a second from Trustee Jay. Are there any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Now on to 6.12, Sabbatical Leave Rescindment. Pro, rescindment of approval of sabbatical leave for, for spring 2018 for one faculty member. We have a motion to approve from Trustee Milchker and a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Have a unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. We're now on to 6.13, South Orange County Community College District, Basic Aid Allocation or Conversion to Canvas Learning Management System, Faculty Conversion to Canvas One-Time Stipends. We have a motion on this item from Trustee Prendergast and a second from Trustee Wright. And are there any requests to speak? Trustee Lang? Oh, Trustee...
Yeah, it's the maker of the motion. So we had heartfelt testimony, public comments earlier, and as, as an instructor, I, I certainly understand the concept of, you know, extra pay for extra work, and I don't deny that compensation being, uh, up for discussion. But we have new information from general counsel that this is being done incorrectly. And so I'm gonna amend the item, I would like to amend the item to postpone action because it involves a compensation that is a mandatory subject of bargaining, and therefore this matter should be brought back to the board upon completion of proper negotiations. And that's, again, is, it's a protection for, for everyone involved, that we don't get caught up in a, a legal battle over gift of public funds or illegally compensating without proper channels.
All right. So Trustee Prendergast has amend, amended the, the item. Is there a second on, or, Trustee Wright, do you accept the amendment? Trustee Wright accepts the amendment. Are there any discussion or questions? There are, it seems to be. Trustee Lang?
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments about this item. And just not to leave anything out, excuse me while I wrote this out in advance, and I'm gonna largely read what I had to, what I had written. During my 21 years on this board, I've consistently expressed my appreciation for the faculty of this district at both of our colleges, and have cooperated with my colleagues on this board to see that our faculty have consistently received very generous compensation, with the result that I believe that they probably have one of the best remuneration packages in the state. I have no regrets about that, since we want our students to learn from the best and the brightest and attract the best possible talent to our community college district. However, this item, in my opinion, is beneath the dignity of our faculty, represents egregious overreaching on their part, and violates every tenet of our basic aid policy. I can't support it. I do not doubt that there is considerable time involved in migrating from one online learning management system, LMS, to another, but the colleges have provided training courses to assist the faculty in this process. The use and learning of this new system is a professional responsibility that faculty need to undertake to do their jobs, for which they are already handsomely paid. In the business world, if a staff person came to me to request more compensation because a new business software version, say Excel, was introduced and needed to do their jobs, that request would be similarly denied. In both cases, we're dealing with professionals, whether faculty or CPAs, who are expected to maintain their professional skills and learn new systems to carry out their professional responsibilities. I've noticed an attitude that some folks feel we are a, quote, wealthy district, unquote, because we are locally supported. My view of this is that we are indeed blessed to have a healthy property tax base, and in exchange for the additional dollars we have been provided by our South Orange County taxpayers above the state apportionment limits, our promise is that we'll use those dollars wisely for one-time initiatives, including infrastructure needs, and not ask our local constituents for additional money through bond proposals that pay for new buildings, athletic fields, future retirement obligations, and similar needs. Those dollars that we would have received from state apportionment will be devoted to our college and campus educational needs. We have, for the most part, honored our end of this compact, and as a result, our community college district is perhaps the financially healthiest in the state. I'm proud of this legacy. Our community college districts, other community college districts, I should say, who were also locally assisted districts, did not adopt the allocation model we used in funding our educational needs of our colleges, and in my opinion, wasted excess local property tax resources. Moreover, we have to be especially vigilant in these times, when we know the future infrastructure needs of our district will far exceed the excess annual local property taxes we receive. And other costs, like future retirement obligations, retiree medical costs, and other expenses continue to escalate. The use of basic aid funds to pay for stipends in this context is wholly inappropriate. Although I might be more amenable to the payment of faculty stipends to convert the Canvas system if these stipends were being approved by the college presidents and paid out of college budgets, I would still argue that this is an inappropriate use of college funds, but at least would be more inclined to defer to the president's decisions on those matters. However, that's not what's being proposed. Some will try to persuade you that the district should pay for this cost because students will be harmed and student learning outcomes will be affected. Again, it is the faculty's responsibility to ensure this doesn't occur as part of their contractual duties and responsibilities. Finally, I understand that the Faculty Association is an important constituency for many trustees. However, let me remind you that your greater duty is to all of the citizens of the South Orange County Community College District. I urge my fellow trustees not to buckle to the pressure being applied to pay more compensation to the faculty who should be professional enough to recognize that converting to the Canvas system is an existing duty and responsibility of theirs to our students that is already incorporated in the generous salaries they are being paid. I urge my fellow trustees to recognize their fiduciary responsibilities to the citizens of this district and vote against this outrageous and inappropriate allocation of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. Do we have any other requests to speak? I, I will speak briefly, and then I'll, I support, Trustee Prendergast, your, your amended motion, Trustee Wright, your second for it. I will only say that, and I appreciate what you said, Trustee Lang. I, I mean, I, when I first came on the board, I, the first thing I said is, you can't have a college without a faculty. You can have one without the administration, but you can't have them without the faculty. And I know that, that, I understand this issue is really important, and I think this to you and to people who came today, and people aren't here today. And I think that the motion was a good one from Trustee Prendergast, and I think hopefully move forward to a resolution that suits all of us and is acceptable, and we can, we can move ahead. But, I mean, I think the latest rounds of negotiations, the last round, I think it ended with a very good result for the faculty that was unanimously supported by the board. And I think, I think you've, over the past five years that I've been on this board, and I think you alluded to it in part in your statement, Trustee Lang, I think there's been strong support for the faculty on, on so many issues. The most important of which, probably for yous, you know, salaries and benefits. And I understand that. And I think your Faculty Association, I say this to your leader, you're doing your job, absolutely. I think the Faculty Association represents your interests well, and as it should. That's, that's a purpose of, of the Faculty Association. It's one of the reasons I quoted Cesar Chavez, because I, he's one of the, one of the great American labor leaders of our time, when he, when he formed the Farm Workers Union in the, in the early 70s. But he also talked about, yes, he got them better conditions, but he also talked about greater things for the community, things I tried to talk about earlier in the, in the board meeting. So, Trustee Witt?
Yes, I wanted to share with everyone, and especially with the faculty, that the amendment is important because we have to do it legally. And having come from the, from faculty, I just want to tell you something. I came here in 1976. I donated my letter of acceptance, the original contract signed by Dr. Lombardi, and I signed a contract to make $19,900 a year as faculty. And it was my role to start a brand-new course. It was a critical care course, and there was one sentence written on that course, and that was, "You will write a critical care course with all its systems." We had a lot of systems. And I started in July, but I started writing the course in June, and every day, just like everyone came to the podium, I could recognize what you were saying. And I went to my dean, Dean Eschbach at the time, and I said, "Dean Eschbach, do you think I could have a little compensation? This, this is a lot. There's not one word written. There's not one test question. There was not one lecture. There's nothing." And she said, "I, no." And I looked at her, go, "For real? I came from Cal State, and we, we got some compensation." And she says, "I'll look into it." I didn't stop writing my lectures. I continued to work. And it wasn't until the week before I started, is that she told me she was going to give me $100 a day for five days. She gave me $500 to write a complete course. I didn't think it was fair, but you know what? I wrote a darn good course. And my, it didn't help me with bread and butter, but it sure made me feel good that I kept on writing it. So I'm hoping that faculty, you don't stop what you're doing. We are going to review this. I am, I am, I am very hopeful that you will receive some compensation. I understand what Trustee Lang says. I'm, I'm very true to our community, but I heard what you said tonight. So just keep on working on, on, on Canvas and don't stop, all right? There's another board meeting to come.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Witt. Any other comments from the board? Okay, so now we have a motion on the amendment, on the amended item, 6.13, as amended by Trustee Prendergast, and a second from Trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and vote.
Can you, can you read the amended motion, please?
Trustee Prendergast.
Amending the motion, the item to postpone action on this item because it involves a compensation that is a mandatory subject of bargaining, and therefore this matter should be... be brought back to the board upon completion of proper negotiations.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Who hasn't voted? The motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory abstention. Okay. We're now on. Apologize. iPad keeps freezing up. We're now on to 7.0 reports. 7.1, South Orange County Community College District Districtwide Strategic Plan. 7.2, Saddleback College, Urban Valley College, and ATEP Vision and Mission Statements. 7.3, Staff Response to Public Comments from Previous Board Meeting. 7.4, Saddleback College and IVC, IVC Speakers. 7.5, Facilities Plan Status Report. Sure can. Trustee Wright.
Just one comment on that. I was noticing that in this update on facilities, you talk about the ATAS building project, but it sounds like this is the, the task building project. I, I thought we were going to build a new facility, but it doesn't really cover that.
You asking Brandy?
Brandy.
Hi, yes, we are going to build a new facility.
That's what I thought, but this indicates that you're, you're trying to take care of the old facility.
Perhaps you could help me understand which part is confusing.
Well, it says here, you're, the budget narrative, there's, there's only $26,000, $26 million, that's for renovating the, the task building.
Correct. So far the board.
But we're going to build a new facility and it's going to cost almost $45 million.
Yes.
But see, that's not, that's not in here.
No, it's not in there yet because we haven't gone through the kickbark cycle that will allow for us to make a recommendation to the board that basic aid dollars would be applied to this project. So we're using those initial $20 million so that we can design the criteria portion of the building and understand the programming and understand the full cost.
I was just looking for, because I know these people are anxious to, to see that this facility is to start.
As are we.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Brandy.
Can you say, we're anxious to start? Start. I mean, how long do you think this is going to take before we can have final?
While we're in the criteria stages of the design right now, that's what the $20 million is being applied towards, so we're not on a pause by any means. However, there is some question that the college is putting forward about the potential for a change in the scope to the project, and that's under discussion right now. And of course, we'll bring that back to you if it is advanced. If that were to be the case, then there would be a three to four month delay on the project causing the occupancy of the building to be delayed by a semester. And that occupancy, I'm looking to see, we have it pending, complete construction in October 2020, which would have gotten us in there in spring, would then be delayed to the fall.
I have to say this, I'm very sensitive to this because the faculty, having lived in so many trailers and, and floors that, you know, caved in and, and sharing my office with raccoons, I, I really have to say, I'd like to, I'd like to see, really, your office and everyone involved move, if they can, just a little bit faster. I mean, a semester is a long time when you've been away from home for almost two years now.
Oh, absolutely. I agree completely with you. The, the question at hand are, are being supported and driven by faculty. And so I think they're, it's their desire that we investigate this fully before moving forward, so we're respecting that request.
Okay, I respect that. If it is what you say.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Okay, any other questions, Brandy?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to 7.6, Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.7, South Orange County Community College District Quarterly Investment Report. 7.8, Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. And 7.9, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. Now moving on to reports from administration and governance groups. Saddleback College Academic Senate, Dan Walsh.
There we go. Good evening. From the academic senate perspective, support for faculty isn't just about more pay in this issue. The conversion to Canvas was part of the online education initiative. This and many other initiatives and programs that occur on the campuses in support of our student success require, often by law, faculty participation. This participation is well beyond our traditional roles of teaching classes. If the district is not supporting them in stipends, reassigned time, or the like, these programs will fail without faculty participations and students will be negatively impacted. The college has at least two more major statewide initiatives coming that will require even more support, Guided Pathways and the PROMIS program. Both will be driven by local decisions of faculty and administration. I hope the district will support these programs in the future. They will not succeed without it.
Thank you. Faculty Association.
Good evening. Several weeks ago, the chancellor released a statement concerning the financial status of the district budget and the inherent responsibilities associated with it. While factually accurate and reasonable to the outside observer, the conclusions belied an underlying fallacy inherent in the arbitrary and artificial construct that is the DRAC model. A target of 85% for salary and benefit costs would be ideal for any district in the state. However, other districts calculate that percentage on their total revenue, we do not. If we did, our percentage would be 58% according to our most recently adopted budget. Other districts manage their operations with a 10% to 20% margin of remaining funds, while the district believes our residual 42% is insufficient and that our college budgets are apparently tight. Unfortunately, these messages of potential doom seem to arise just prior to negotiations but never seem to manifest themselves in future realities. Over the last 14 years, using published budgets and salary schedules, district revenues have increased yearly, on average by 6.1%, while salaries have increased by 2.3%. A rising tide should float all boats equally and yet does not seem to. In the last 10 years, district annual revenues have increased from approximately $187 million to $386 million. With the exception of some reclassified administration, salaries have not kept pace. In an unprecedented step, the district administration and the Faculty Association recently sunshined our contract proposals together as a demonstration that we are moving forward to a new era in negotiations, an era of cooperation and collegiality. However, recent micromanagement of a Canvas conversion proposal that was recommended by the chancellor and her professional staff appears to be a regression to previous behaviors and not in keeping with this new approach. We applaud the chancellor and her staff for the newer approach. We can only hope this trend continues throughout the negotiation process and that we don't hold employees responsible for budget policies and administration actions over which they have no control. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. IVC Academic Senate.
No report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now have the Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, Bob Bermucchi.
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you. And your fifth day is still going? Vice Chancellor of Human Resources?
No report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chancellor of Business Services?
I would just like to mention briefly, trustee Prendergast talked about the audit committee meeting that we had this afternoon. I would like to thank, in particular, Kim McCord and her staff for the great work they did, and Richard Kudlik, our new internal auditor, who had a lot to do with helping to bring that audit in. And you've got a very excellent finance staff here. And I've often said, virtually everything eventually culminates in the business office, so it's also a reflection on the rest of the institution as well. So I think you're, you've got a good faculty and staff here thinking about accountability.
I know I did say you can have a college without administration, but faculty are important, but we, we need you guys a little bit too. I didn't mean to slight you. IVC Classified Senate. I think you're up.
Okay, I have a couple of things. On October 6, we had a successful Classified Senate Professional Development Summit where over 60 staff, faculty, and administrators attended. The topics were Title IX and suicide prevention. On October 31, we also had our annual Halloween bake sale. We raised over about $700. Each, each year, we provide about three to five scholarships with funds that we collect from this and other fundraising events that we have over the year. And on November 28, we are planning an open house in, at the Forming Art Center for all the classified retirees.
Thank you. And bringing us to a close will be CSEA President Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to wish all the Board of Trustees the very happiest four-day holidays next week. The best thing about Thanksgiving, besides football and food, is being with family. And the best thing about being with family during Thanksgiving is that there are no obligations and you just have a really good time being with one another, enjoying family members, except for that weird uncle that, you know, may show up at Thanksgiving. But other than that, it is, Thanksgiving has always been one of the best memories I've ever had. So I'm wishing everyone the best.
I used to say that until I became the weird uncle myself, so.
[laughing]
True, unfortunately. So with that, I really wish everyone here a happy and healthy and restful Thanksgiving. Good night.
Jordan.